Another meeting. But this is the Board of Commissioners of Boulder County. It's Wednesday, February 17th, 2010. And we're here for a joint study session with the members of the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And this is to talk about special use review processes and in particular docket DC-090005. And we're going to do this a little bit differently than we would have normally. And it's really so that we can have the right kind of discussion with members of the public who are here today. Normally, we would just talk amongst ourselves, but I think we really wanted to have everybody up here, but then also to be able to have a discussion. So Michelle Kriesic or Abby will be at the microphone trying to facilitate us. It's a little hard for us to see everybody along this line, too. So if you see us out craning our necks, that's really what's going on. I'm just trying to see how people are, what their comments are and how they're moving their hands as they talk. Probably makes sense just to go down the line and introduce ourselves so that everybody in the audience knows who is here. So Ben, maybe if we can start with you.
I'm Ben Blaugrind. John Gerstle.
And both with the Planning Commission. I'm Ben Proman, County Commissioner.
Scott Hallwood with the Planning Commission.
Sharon Menard, Planning Commission.
Will Turner, County Commissioner.
Pat Shanks, Planning Commission.
Neil Anderson, Planning Commission.
Gail Hartman, Planning Commission.
Great. Abby, if you can just tell us where we're headed today and get us started.
Will do, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Abby Janus with the Land Use Department. As Commissioner Proman mentioned, this is a study session to talk about the docket DC-090005, Evaluation of the Special Use Process and Uses. The purpose of this docket is to evaluate whether or not the special use process is working for us and how it can be improved. These would be Land Use Code amendments that would trigger special use reviews such as uses that exceed 25,000 square feet of floor area and other types of intensity triggers, as well as schools, camps, churches, conference centers, resort lodges, uses of community significance, and basically a wide variety of uses. You had a little bit of a preview, but I'd like to just mention kind of what we're going to do for the next two hours. We are in a pretty tight timeline. I'm going to try and keep my staff presentation to about 10 minutes. We're going to do a quick review of jargon. We're going to talk about the purpose and the goals of this project and then talk about the regulatory options that staff has presented to you in the staff report. We're going to allow a few minutes for just some very quick clarification type questions, if you have any. And then we'd like to head into the public testimony. Public testimony will be timed. We're going to give three minutes each. There's a lot of people here that would like to speak. We're hoping we can get it done in about 45 minutes, though, which would leave 60 minutes for you to consider the public testimony that you heard, consider everything that you've read in the staff report, talk amongst yourselves, and provide direction to staff as to how we can draft regulations to address some of the issues that we've identified in this docket. Michelle Kriesic is going to help with that. Since you're all sitting in a straight line, she's going to help us facilitate that discussion a little bit. She'll be able to see who is interested in making a point or asking a question so she can kind of direct traffic that way a little bit. So planner jargon. Many of you have seen this slide. I know a lot of people in the audience have come to the meetings that we've held, so they've seen this slide, but I'd just like to go over it again in case anybody has any questions. So special use. Staff refers to it as SU a lot. It can either be the land use process, or it can be a parcel of land that's received approval to operate that special use. We kind of use those interchangeably. It can be confusing, so I apologize for that. Nonconforming use. An existing use that established prior to the Land Use Code or prior to a Land Use Code change. An illegal use is a new use that was established after the Land Use Code had a way to regulate it. And frequently, it can be a nonconforming use that changes and increases its intensity or expands in some way. So a nonconforming use is able to operate as it normally would, as it's normally, as it's established, but it can't expand in any way. If it does expand, it becomes illegal. Other acronyms, alphabet supes that planners like to use, B-O-C-C, that's the three people, well, two people right now that are interspersed here. PC is the rest of you. BCCP is also called the Comp Plan or the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. So what's the problem? We've had six community meetings now where we've talked to people about what the problems are with special use. And this is kind of from an applicant's perspective. There's a perception that it's a long process. It can be a long process. We tell applicants it usually takes about six months to get through the process. That's a minimum of one Planning Commission meeting and one Board of County Commissioners meeting. It can be expensive, both for the review itself, for the fees, and for the costs, other costs associated with it, such as consultants that may need to be involved. It can be a trigger for other expenses. Other expenses like upgrades to your onsite wastewater system, upgrades to your driveway, things that are expensive, that staff sees as a serious concern, that the Land Use Code says you need to improve, but it can be something that an applicant maybe didn't contemplate improving when they entered into the process. And there is a perception that the process is unpredictable. There are conditions of approval that usually go along with most approvals, and they can be restrictive to some applicants from their perspective. It can restrict the number of people that can come to events that they have. It can restrict the number of events they have on an annual basis. There can be other things in there that maybe applicants weren't aware of could have happened before they applied. There's an issue with nonconforming uses. As to what improvements that can be made if your use is nonconforming. The Land Use Code is pretty restrictive right now. It says that if you have a nonconforming use, you can't expand in any way, even if it's to add a covered porch to an area where you already have a deck. That would be seen as an expansion. You can't do it if you have a nonconforming use. You would have to come through the process, apply for special use, receive approval, and then add the roof to the deck. So it can be quite onerous. Nonconforming uses can receive permits for health-safety improvements, but also it's difficult sometimes to understand, is it truly a health-safety issue? So perhaps that there's some problems with nonconforming uses we could address in this process. There's also an issue of trying to determine whether or not a use has expanded over the time that they've been operating as a nonconforming use and thus become illegal. Illegal uses do not have a right to remain in operation. They actually have to cease once they become illegal. Another issue, there's the same process, the same review criteria, but there's a wide variety of projects that fall within this. And there's a large scale of variation that can fall within this same process. So perhaps we could make some amendments to help address this wide variety of scale. And then also the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan has served as a terrific vision document for the county since 1978, but it can be challenging to apply the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan on a site-specific basis. And I think that there are some recent applications where we've come into that. It's difficult to kind of narrow it down on these site-specific, you know, issues. And I think that there's probably ways that we can make some amendments either to the code or maybe even the Comprehensive Plan that help address some of those concerns. So the goals of this project, basically to improve the clarity of the regulations, to provide some predictability, to make sure that the process is appropriately scaled to what people are requesting, and to really just look at consistency between the Comprehensive Plan and what people are looking at doing. We're not trying to create more problems for people. We're not trying to recreate the wheel here. We're just trying to codify basically what these boards have been doing for the past 30 years, since we've been looking at special uses and looking at it in light of the Comprehensive Plan, trying to codify some of those goals. So with that, I'm going to get into the regulatory options that staff has presented. And it might be helpful for you to both be looking at the screen and looking at your staff report. The way that this is numbered, it goes along with Exhibit A. So for people that are in the audience, if you have your staff report also, you can look at, you know, A1, which has a whole host of options within A1. A2 has a whole host of options and all down the line. So that's pages 6 through 20 in your staff report. So one of the first situations that we've identified as a common situation, something that probably should be addressed in these Land Use Code amendments, is looking at existing uses that are seeking to expand or change. This would be an existing use that's already received special use approval, so they are in SU, and they're looking to do something a little bit different or expand in some way. So some of the ideas that we've come up with this. Create a new zone district. In the 90s, we, these boards created the Mountain Institutional Zone District, removed some institutional uses from the Forestry District, allowed them in the Mountain Institutional Zone District, and actually initiated rezonings. Those rezonings, in order to be eligible for the rezonings, you really had to qualify based on site-specific criteria. And things that would be included with that would be access to transit options, parcel size, different factors that might make more sense for an institutional use, you know, due to the number of people that would go to that site. We've also talked about setting specific regulatory limits for existing uses seeking to expand. There's always this question of whether or not, you know, is the sky the limit? How big is too big? People drive around the county and they get a sense for what Boulder County feels like and looks like, but we haven't been able, we haven't yet codified that. And perhaps that we can codify that so that users know from the outset whether or not their idea won't fit in the county's character. And I think it might be helpful for people just to know that upfront, whether or not their idea would or wouldn't fit. And I'm going to talk about this a little bit more under new uses also. But with setting a specific limit, perhaps that makes sense as a blanket statement, setting a limit? Perhaps there's another limit that could be achieved through a TDC program or a TDR program, that's transferable development rights. We have that right now for house sizes to help provide for a variety of house sizes throughout the county. And we also have a TDR program for preserving land in one area and allowing denser developments in other areas. And this is something that could perhaps be applied to special uses as well. A4, create parameters for changes in use, and also establishing definitions for major and minor modifications. These two situations happen a fair amount, and we don't actually have criteria in the code really to address these uses. And it would probably serve a good purpose for applicants to understand what it is, what it means to be a major modification, which would require a new special use process, or if it's a minor modification, in which case it can be approved administratively, and it's much simpler and often less expensive for the applicant. Similar parameters for a change in use. If you have a use that's, say, going from a church to a school, a school to a church, or anything in between, perhaps we should have parameters that just either enable that through an easier process or show that that's something that we're going to recognize or somehow recognize if that happens. Because once a church is built, that doesn't mean that it's always going to be a church, for example. Moving on to new uses seeking to establish. One of the concepts that we've talked a lot about at the staff level, and we've started to talk about with people in public meetings, is this idea that perhaps the regulations should favor existing uses and the expansion of existing uses over the establishment of new uses. And the reason for that is that existing uses are established, and there's a lot of embodied energy in existing buildings. There's also reasons to value the existing site disturbance of an existing building and then protect what's not built, protect areas that aren't built on. So we've talked a little bit about, you know, how can we structure these regulations so that existing uses are able to remain vital in the county, but at the same time not, you know, protect the county's character, protect what it is, which is to say that we don't have a lot of these special uses throughout. We don't have a lot of large uses, intense uses in the county. And I think that that's something that hasn't happened by accident. I think it's been, you know, since the Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 1978 that we've really been looking out for this sort of thing. So this is a big idea that's in the staff report that's talked about. So within this, setting specific regulatory limits, perhaps it makes sense to have regulatory limits for existing uses that are of a lesser intensity than limits for existing uses, meaning that existing uses could grow, could remain vital, could also probably work within, you know, what they've already developed, but favor that over new uses seeking to establish. So try and, you know, look at those other goals in the Comp Plan and protect the open areas. We also looked at creating a new zone district, similar to what I talked about before. There probably are certain areas, particularly, so Mountain Institutional is already existing. This would be a comparable zone district in the Plains, a Plains Institutional Zone District. And then we've talked a little bit about allowing users to overcome limits that are set, if they are set, through the demonstration that their impacts can be mitigated. So if you don't increase your traffic, if you don't increase your water usage or electricity usage or whatever impacts are of concern, then perhaps it is okay if they have got more people or if they have more square footage. If the square footage they're adding doesn't actually add to their overall carbon footprint, maybe that's something that should be allowed. We don't have this in the code right now, and it would provide more, probably more flexibility for people who are looking for options and ways to do things. The third situation that I mentioned, nonconforming uses. We've talked a little bit about, actually, in the meetings that we've had, the six public meetings that we've had, a lot of the people that end up coming are nonconforming uses right now. Some of the nonconforming uses, users, property owners, are frankly a little afraid to apply for the special use, for special use. They're okay with operating as a nonconforming use. They're making do the best they can, but they feel that it is an unpredictable process. And I think you'll hear a little bit about that from people today. And so we've talked a lot about, well, maybe there are uses, uses of community significance or, you know, uses that meet the goals and policies of the Comp Plan that we value, that belong in the county, that we would want to allow through a less rigorous process than a full special use. And this is probably within some intensity parameters. I think, you know, a lot of the decisions that both of these boards have made over the course of the past few years, you know, you've said that the sky is not the limit, that there is a point at which it's no longer rural and it no longer fits the character. So, but within that, I think you also recognize that there are uses that really do belong in the unincorporated county. It's difficult to have a Girl Scout camp in a city. And so I think that there's something that we probably need to do in the code that recognizes that and allows those uses to grow as they do and evolve. So some of the other ideas that we've talked about is just creating a nonconforming use registry. This is something that Weld County has done with some success from what I've heard. And the idea there is to really just figure out what's nonconforming, how, what level they're currently operating. And if we had a registry and we knew where they were operating at, it would allow them to perhaps apply for permits and get them a little bit faster because we wouldn't constantly be wondering whether or not they're an illegal use, if they've expanded, all this other stuff. It would just be a nice way to document their status. It would also help protect those uses so that neighbors coming in would be able to come to the county, determine that they are a nonconforming use, that they are around, that they've been there for a certain amount of time, and they know about that upfront. The next three items I'm going to talk about are issues that have been identified over the course of this docket that really weren't initially, we didn't think they were going to be in the scope of the project initially, but they've come up as something that staff feels, and I think some other people are recognizing, that we should probably do some cleanup. We don't have a land use designation right now for camps. We have a number of Boy Scout camps, church camps, Girl Scout camps, school-related camps, most of them in the mountains, not all of them, but we don't actually have a use classification for it. A number of them are nonconforming, which kind of makes sense considering that we don't have a use classification for it. We either shove them into a use classification called resort lodges, conference centers, or guest ranches, or we try and shove them into a use classification called, like, membership organization or something like that, something that's meant for an Elks Lodge, really, but it doesn't describe a camp. So one of the things staff's identified is just creating a use for camps. We've also identified some issues with the special use criteria itself. There's probably a way to, I know there's a way, I've seen codes written this way, to codify the county's values and provide guidance to users through the code itself so you don't have to sort through the Comp Plan to try and figure out whether or not the county values your use, but so that you could just read the Land Use Code and see what it is that we're saying. So these would be sort of commentaries within the Land Use Code itself to codify the county's values. We've talked a little bit about adding criteria to make it clear when a proposal will be denied. Perhaps there are always, you know, I don't even, I can't think offhand right now what it'd be. Say the floodway. There are areas in this county that are in the floodways, and if we don't ever want to allow a special use in a floodway, we should just come out and say that in the Land Use Code. And we don't say that right now. We say, well, if you can get a floodplain development permit, well, if you can do this, you know, blah, blah, blah. But if we don't want it in the floodway or the floodplain, we should just, we should state it. Moving to more performance-based criteria, this is a little bit of what I talked about earlier. If you reduce this, if you don't have impacts that exceed, you know, the existing baseline or whatever, you should be allowed to do that. And we can move all of our criteria towards that. Right now, our criteria are a little more open-ended. They say, you know, will not have any adverse impacts. So we could be a little more quantitative about that. There's probably also a need to clarify the submittal requirements. These are found in Article III in the Land Use Code. Just things that are pretty basic, actually, like, you know, whether or not a use or an application needs a traffic impact analysis or a traffic report or a soils report or something like that. Right now, we just say all special uses need them. And perhaps there's a way to differentiate whether or not you actually need some of these certain reports, because those things can be expensive. They often involve engineers, consultants, other people to gather this data for you. We've talked a little bit about the role and necessity of the special use triggers. Some of the, some of the dockets that come before you involve these special use triggers, that is, more than 100 people on a parcel, more than 150 average daily trips, more than 25,000 square feet of floor area, or second principal uses, multiple principal uses. So there are probably some ways to clarify that. One in particular is the multiple principal use issue. In all zone districts, if you have a multiple principal use, it is required to go through special use approval. So for instance, if you have a small strip mall or say even a house with two levels, like the first level is one business, the second level is a different business, it's in a business zone, so it can have businesses located there. If you wanted a coffee shop on the first floor and some sort of professional office on the second floor, it would be seen as a multiple principal use, and you would need to go through special use for it. Even if it didn't meet any of the special use triggers, even if it was in a business zone, even if it had ample parking, even if it had everything else, it would be a multiple principal use. And perhaps we need to evaluate that. Perhaps that doesn't make sense. This is something to think about there. And then the last issue we've identified is the, there's a section in the code called Special Review for Uses Which Exceed Additional Requirements of Zoning Districts. That's those triggers that I was just talking about in E5. There's a whole host of criteria that are meant just for those triggers. And I haven't found in the past 15, 20 years or so that staff has been using those criteria. They don't actually make sense for most of the things that we look at. This may have been when the Land Use Code was most recently reamended, when it became the Land Use Code after it was the zoning ordinance. It may have been a carryover. I'm not really sure. We need to do some more research on that, but this might be a relic, and we might be able to delete two pages of the code. And then finally, special use versus limited impact, special review. The same criteria are used for different types of projects, and perhaps that doesn't make sense. Because if they're different types of projects, why would they be reviewed under the same criteria? Really, the only difference is that the Planning Commission does not see limited impact special reviews, they only see special use reviews. And I've just thrown out a few examples of what a special use is versus limited impact. I try to be comparable, sort of along the same uses, but it's a little bit different. So perhaps we should evaluate that as well. Through the course of these meetings, some additional ideas have come up, and I wanted to present those to you. I think you're going to hear a little bit about this also, but I told everyone that I would present these to you, so here they are. One of the ideas that came out of these meetings is that we should rezone existing nonconforming businesses to business zone district. They are nonconforming because of the Land Use Code changes. So their thought is that the county should initiate rezonings to business zone districts for these uses. There was a thought that the review criteria should consider stewardship of the land in review criterias and in approval of special uses. So if the forestry zone district is the zone district you're located in, you should be good stewards of the land, and that should be something that's looked at favorably for your review. And likewise, in the plains, if you're being a good steward on the plains, that that's something that should be looked at favorably. There's an idea that a staff position should be created to serve as an applicant's advocate. There's a perception among the public that staff is on your side rather than on the applicant's side, and so they wanted someone on their side, but who would be a county person who would know the ins and outs of county meetings and county processes. There was a suggestion that communication should be limited between staff and the Board of County Commissioners. There's a perception that you know as much as staff does and that the applicants are not privy to that information. And then there was a suggestion that staff reports should be made available to the public at least a week prior to every public meeting. And staff tries, we try our hardest to do that, and sometimes it doesn't work, but if that's something that is a concern to you also, it could be codified in the code as a regulation. And with that, I don't have anything else for you. This concludes my presentation. I know there's a lot, there's a lot here, there's a lot in the staff report. I'm sure you read all 87 pages really closely. You know, you're going to take public testimony here. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have just clarification questions immediately, but I'd like to not spend too much time with that because I really want you to hear what the public has to say. And then after that, we'll move into discussion, so.
Are there questions? Yes.
Yeah, could you just speak briefly to the difference between a new zoning ordinance versus an overlay and what the implications of a overlay district are?
Sure, not a huge difference. So with a, with a new zoning district or with an overlay, the overlay, the way it works is that the underlying zone district, so what's already there, in most cases it would be the agricultural zone district, the regulations of the agricultural zone district would remain. So the setbacks, perhaps the height, sort of the underlying characteristics would still be there. And then the overlay would be something that properties could either apply for or something that these boards could decide to direct staff to identify. And it really kind of functions in the same, in the same manner, actually. It would just allow more intense uses or institutional uses or uses that gather a lot of people to be located there in that certain site.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Well, then let's turn directly to the public hearing. We do have a sign-up sheet. We'll start at the top and move down to the bottom, and then if there are others who would like to comment after that, then we will do that next. Again, we do have a timing system, just so that you know how this works. We have three different lights, green, amber, and red. It'll be solid green for your first two minutes, and then it turns to be flashing green for the next 30 seconds. Your last 30 seconds, the light is amber, and then when the red light comes on, that means your three minutes are up. The lights are right up here if you can't see them. And we do ask that you finish your comments at the three-minute mark just so that we can make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. So we'll start first with Tammy Ackerman and then Jeff Bradley. And if you can always just give your name and address for the record when you start, that would be great as well.
Hi. My name is Tammy Ackerman, and my home address is 79 Big John Road, Lyons, Colorado. First of all, I want to thank Abby and staff for all the work they've put into this. They've been great. I'd also like to mention that although I was unable to attend yesterday, the 747 Allen's Park Townsite update, I did watch it on streaming video. That's a pretty cool technology. I was pleased to hear that the commissioners were willing to sit down with us and hammer out some of our specifics and some of our recommendations. Currently, I'm acting as the lead to the Business Policy Committee for the Allen's Park area, and I'm going to reiterate a little bit of what was presented yesterday. I am in support of the county simplifying the special use process and increasing the clarity and predictability. A few things I want to address. It seems appropriate for nonconforming properties that have historically been operating as businesses, some for longer than, is this still on? Okay. Some for longer than many of us have been here. Be granted a zoning designation appropriate to their historical use without having to go through the special use process. To that end, perhaps we should develop an additional zoning category together with a simple mechanism to bring these properties into conformity. Many of these properties could easily fit into the business zoning as it exists today, but perhaps those that aren't served by a public right of way should have a different business zoning designation without having to navigate the special use process. Another item of extreme concern. Another item of extreme concern is reinstating the business zoning to the properties that have historically been zoned business but had lost that designation in the early 80s. There's inequity here. Some of these properties kept their business zoning, and others lost it. One in particular is a business in Allen's Park that rents cabins to tourists and is accessed from a state highway as well as a county road. They've been in operation since the 1930s, yet they lost their business zoning in the 80s. That downzoning has caused the owners some difficulties over the years. There are other similar properties that appropriately retained their zoning, yet have the exact same operational circumstances. I recommend immediate reinstatement of business zoning to those historically operating as a business, yet lost their business zoning. Again, without the requirement of navigating the special use process. I'm also in support of multiple principal uses being allowed by right for properties that have appropriate business zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff Bradley, and then Jim August.
My name is Jeff Bradley. I live at 1540 Lehigh Street in Boulder. I'm here to speak about Camp Patia, which is a Boy Scout camp up on Flagstaff Mountain. I want to also thank the staff for all the work they're putting in with the land use improvements, and we're all for that. I'm a big advocate of camping. My scout troop is sending five different crews to Utah spring break. We're sending two crews to Alaska this summer. Kids don't start out, however, going to Alaska. They start out at a place like Camp Patia. We mostly serve Cub Scout troops who go up there only on the weekends, and they go there because we're close and we have indoor plumbing. A lot of families will not go camping, alas, unless there is indoor plumbing, but we're not worried about the parents. We just want to hook the kids. If we can get them up there at a place where they might see the stars for the first time without light pollution, or hear an owl, or see a bear in the wild, we have succeeded. We do entry-level camping. In the grand scheme of things in scouting, our camp is very small. We have in one year less people than our main camp in Dela Tour has in one day in the summertime. It's a very small operation. And let me say, at this point, I'm not especially speaking for the council or the Boy Scouts of America, just myself. Right now, nonprofits in this current economic situation are having the worst time they've had since the 1930s. In scouting and other places, one of our friends said it's like having three cowboys in a bed with a blanket that only covers two on a cold night, and they're pulling it back and forth. When I hear language like I did earlier that camps might get shoved into a category of resorts and lodges and dude ranches or whatever, it's that shove that I fear. A little camp like ours does not have the money to meet if we have things that trigger our going up to levels such as resorts would have. If we had to make our buildings meet the same standards as commercial buildings, we would be in a very tight place. I have no, not at all tied with the council and don't know what they would do, but my fear is, if something like this happened, they would close that camp. They would sell it. This camp has served thousands of boys and girls over the years, siblings, sisters who come there, introducing them to camping. And for a camp like that, after all that time to close, ladies and gentlemen, would be a shame. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim August, and then Elwyn Hebner.
Jim August, 1605 Innocent Circle, Longmont, Colorado, representing Camp Paul Hummel. And first off, I'd like to introduce some of our original campers. Mary Wells, Doris Rud, Margaret, Marguerite, and Lloyd Kuhn. They were involved in our camp, one way or another, in the 1930s. So, I really think this helps establish our historical use. That was before any land use controls came into existence. Camp Paul Hummel does not fit under any classifications, including resort lodge, because we don't have central water and sewage to all buildings. We have a central bathhouse, like Camp Patia. And resort lodges, which is what the county has told us our camp is, can't be in a forest zone. And that's where we're at. We were there before they even had zoning in the county. We need to treat commercial campgrounds and resort lodges different from nonprofit campgrounds. Totally different thrusts. One's a profit-making thrust, in effect, and the other is a community service thrust. Camps need to be a use by right for all rural zones, if the camp is within certain specification, specimen limits. It would suggest the limits, and this is tying in with Section D1 of Abby's report, that if the ADT is less than, for example, 150, which these kind of things are picked up from other categories in the regulations, and approved wastewater system per Boulder County Health Department, 25,000, it says on the little handout, 50,000, but I noticed it was up here, it said 25,000 for your floor space, 35 acres minimum, that could be adjusted, 30 feet maximum height, and camps are the only use on the property. If that was met, I think camps should be approved for use by right. Now, they'll have to still go through building, you know, getting building permits. And as we upgrade each building, we'd like to have the permit or the requirements restricted to that building. Because the way it is right now, my understanding is, if we want to do one little thing, we have to go through the entire camp facilities and bring everything into code, even though it has functioned since, in the 1930s. You know, so, it's an excessive burden.
Thank you. If you would like.
I do.
Okay.
Okay, I'm very, very close to being done here.
And just so, Mark Sears is next, on deck.
So, we'd like to have camps, nonprofit camps grandfathered in, that existed before the comp plan or the Land Use Department was created. And it should be designated as a conforming use. Okay, the nonprofit camps in Boulder County could be considered bridges in the infrastructure of social programs to help primarily with our young people. We are doing a service at no cost to taxpayers to help develop better citizens. Okay, the support and maintenance of nonprofit camps is a form of a stimulus package at no cost to taxpayers. We also provide a replacement for part of the federal government's Troubled Asset Relief Program, which is commonly called TARP. Ours could be called the Teen Asset Revitalization Program, again, at no cost to taxpayers. So, we really, the motion is, in fact, is started here of setting camp, recognizing camps as a separate entity, which they should have been done back many, many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Sears, and then Lyndon Newsom.
Hello, I'm Mark Sears. I reside in Fort Collins, Colorado, at 3131 Worthington Avenue. I'm here as a representative of Highlands Presbyterian Camp and Retreat Center. I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners, and the county commissioners, and certainly staff who've opened this opportunity for dialogue on the special use review process. Highlands has gone through two special use review processes over the years successfully, and we appreciated those recognitions of what we provide you as services. Highlands is currently celebrating its 65th year of providing services to the community, and so, we really would applaud the efforts that are being made here to recognize camps as conforming uses, as used by right, as the previous gentleman mentioned, and recognizing their benefits to the community. Some of the things that have been mentioned in Abby's report, which we think is very thorough and very well done, we would like to support the clear definitions or prescriptive criteria or rights that would help a landowner with, when they present a proposal, to know whether or not their proposal is going to meet the conditions for approval or not before they go through the expense of a use review. Parameters should, however, reflect the size and location of the site. We feel acceptable floor ratios would be a good parameter, traffic generation on a per acre of the site, as opposed to a strict limit on traffic generation, and perhaps occupancy per acre of the site, that would be various, or favorable for the types of institutional uses and recognition of the locations as well. We certainly support the county favoring expansion of existing uses. We do agree that there's a lot of embodied energy in existing structures and existing facilities, not only physically, but also in the time and money that's put and put into these. We certainly would like to support the allowing existing institutional uses to overcome development units by showing that the impacts can be mitigated, or that the impacts are minimal in nature, and would have minimal impact to the surrounding neighbors. We'd support allowing the upper limit for existing uses to be expanded higher than the maximum limit for new uses, recognizing that these uses would have minimal impact. We'd also recommend modifying the triggers. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lyndon Newsom, and then Mary Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Lyndon Newsom. I live at 7402 Pembroke Court in Castle Rock, Colorado, and I also own a little cabin in Raymond, Colorado, which is why I'm here. I am active in the 747 project team, and since that whole process started a few years ago, I've been involved in a lot of meetings here. I wanted to open by talking with Cindy, who's not here, so I'll have to kind of speak to that point. Couple of years ago, she came up to a meeting in a private home to meet with some of our people about, that sort of led to this whole process. And she opened by saying that she remembered as a kid, she had so many positive memories of always wanting her dad to take her to Allen's Park, and she mentioned a restaurant and some of the other places that she had gone. And those were really great memories for her, and that's how she opened. And I guess the challenge that I would ask all of you is, do you want today's kids to have those kind of memories of those kinds of places? Do you want future generations to have those kind of memories? Because that's what we're talking about here today. So, it's, you go to the mountains for the mountains and the trees and rivers, but you remember the places. You stay in the places, you eat in the places. These are the places we're talking about that create the memories like Cindy has. So, the challenge before all of you today is, are you going to have rules that support and encourage those places to survive and thrive? Or are you going to continue to have rules that cause places like this to close their doors? And that's the fundamental question here today. So, what I'm going to ask all of you is, there's a lot of complicated stuff in this document. I think Abby has done a very nice job, and I really appreciate the effort that is underway here. I would ask, before you dive into all of the options in this document, that you just step back and say, what are we trying to achieve here? Think of Stephen Covey began with the end in mind. What is the end? What we're looking for here is for you all to say, our objective is, yes, we recognize these places are valuable contributions to the character of the community. They represent the history, they represent the fabric of these communities you're trying to preserve. So, ask, focus, so, give us that statement. Focus and prioritize on the core value of the existing uses, and making it legal again. They used to be legal until the rules changed. Change the rules so they're legal again. On the question of advocacy, there's two points. One is, all the processes should be built around that you're trying to encourage and support this. Add one more point, but I guess I'll have to do it another time.
If we have time at the end, we'll get you back up here. Mary Jones, and then John Vanderhart.
My name is Mary Jones. I live at 10040 Phillips Road in Lafayette, actually, in unincorporated Boulder County. One of the questions in the special use review document on page five asks this question. Should there be a clear maximum development limit to help advise landowner, neighbors, and staff when a proposal is simply too big or too intense? This is the clarity which could avoid unnecessary expenses of time, money, and effort by all three, the applicant, the staff, and the neighbors. It would avoid the recent situation in which land use staff and parks and open space staff disapproved an application for expansion, yet the commissioners gave a limited approval. There seemed to be disappointment on all parts. In determining what is too big, there are more items than those listed on page five in this document. Along with square footage, number of vehicle trips, parking lot size, and floor area ratio, there are considerations of the number of people using the facility, and the amount of time the facility is in use. Is it used all year long, during the week and on weekends, from dawn to dusk and so forth? This floor area ratio might be different depending on local topography. Location is also another important consideration for other criteria. It seems inappropriate to use the criteria of persons per acre in comparison with another special use facility, rather than in comparison with the adjacent neighborhood. And this seems critical for maintaining rural preservation in rural residential neighborhoods. On page six, the document suggests the board could decide to hold firm on any established limits for existing uses. The advantage is, it would be easy to administer and easy for applicants to understand. Isn't this the kind of clarity to be sought? I have seen a cap placed on an existing facility raised three times over the years, and each time, I mistakenly thought it was a permanent cap. What are maximum limits? Are caps just for the time being, until new commissioners are elected, or until new owners or managers, managers of facilities arrive who have not yet struggled with this process? Thank you very much. I do appreciate your efforts in keeping Boulder County from becoming a sprawling suburbia, and for the fact that there's still wheat fields and cattle grazing near my home.
Thank you. John Vanderhart, and then Mary Pat Hepp.
I'm, excuse me, I'm John Vanderhart, 38619 Boulder Canyon Drive, also known as the Alps Boulder Canyon Inn. I do want to thank Abby, and I really appreciate the effort that she's gone to. I've been to a couple of the different meetings, and I think they're certainly on the right track. I would like to speak really specifically to A4 in what she is talking about. The building that we have was originally built as a lodge prior to 1870. Very historic property here in Boulder County. We went after a special use back in 1990, when we bought the property from the Moose Lodge. That special use... That special use process ultimately cost us, in engineering and in fees associated with that, over $100,000. Twenty years have gone by. The lodging industry has changed significantly, and for us to remain a viable company and an asset, which I believe we are to Boulder County, changes need to be made. For us to want to attempt to go back through that special use process after what we experienced the first time, I can't think of anything that is less desirable, basically, for us to want to endure. Not only that, but we really can't afford it any longer, given, you know, the economic circumstances of the lodging industry in Colorado right now. So I would really like you to look at a more streamlined process for changes in the special use. I think that Abby has some very good points on A4, and so I would really like that to be highlighted. Also, something that happened to us back when we applied for our special use originally, we had applied as a bed and breakfast and as a breakfast restaurant. We didn't find out till the morning of our use hearing that the land use staff had determined that they were not going to support our breakfast restaurant. So I would also support G5 as something that needs to be happened. I believe that we were sandbagged when we came into that hearing, and I know none of the people that were originally involved with land use at that time are still there, but I think that that would be a lot fairer for anyone who's involved, and I thank you for your considerations. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mary Pat Hepp, and I live at 4857 Henderson Court in Lafayette. I'm a fairly new resident of Boulder County, having moved here in July of 2008. I've been visiting friends and family in the area for more than 30 years, however, and definitely noticed the immense changes in the county over time, particularly as it pertained to the burgeoning communities along Route 36 corridor. Having, I greatly appreciate the county's efforts towards sustaining the environment while allowing for the controlled growth that is also necessary for the health of this county. As you rewrite your code to accommodate necessary limited growth, I urge you to consider requiring sustainability plans from pre-existing organizations that apply, as well as from new entities, and to develop a reliable and workable system of metrics to judge their proposed and real efficacy. This should have a positive effect on all residents, as it will give you increased control over the environment. In fact, the less growth that is allowed, the less control you will have over the environment. I've also been involved with plans and designs at five independent schools that have been challenged by the need to provide their students with excellent educations and the accompanying facilities while fitting into the settings and codes of the surroundings. As a teacher and school administrator, I strongly support the suggestion that stewardship be considered as part of the review criteria. We owe that to our children, and my current school has a strong program to teach and implement such stewardship. In addition, it has proved beneficial in some of the other regions encompassing the schools that I previously referred to, to consider the actual footprint of the facility as one of the most essential components of the projects in addition to the FAR. Since the footprint most closely approximates the impervious land in question, changing your requirements could allow structures to extend underground, thus expanding the allowable square footage without having any additional effects on the size of the land parcel. I have faith that the county will be successful in developing a code that will accommodate the limited growth of these organizations that share the county's commitment to sustainability, and I thank you for your efforts.
Well, that's the end of those who have signed up, and so we're ready to turn it over to see if there are others who would like to comment. Just a quick show of hands, how many people want to comment? Okay, Cindy, you can take over.
All right, next person up. We'll start on this side of the room and then work our way across.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Spence. I live at 3885 North Seventeenth in Boulder. I'm the general manager, excuse me, for Eldora Mountain Resort. And I also want to thank Abby for the transparency in which she's conducted where we've gotten to date. It's great, and we know what's going on, and it's been no surprises. Really appreciate that. Eldora has buildings approaching 50 years old. We employ over 600 people on a seasonal basis, and almost 100 people on a full-time basis. And as we look at just trying to maintain market share and continue to be a place for Boulder County people to recreate, I'm concerned moving forward that some of the math, the models for determining building size and tying things to acreage for us aren't going to work really well. We have some really interesting topography. 600 acres of our operation are under permit with the federal government. Another couple hundred are in Gilpin County, under permit, or under leases with private individuals. So as we move forward and we want to do things and upgrade facilities, some of the way that things are calculated, we're concerned will not work well for us, and do not take into account the effects of the other properties that we're dealing with. We totally support the idea of TDRs, think that that's a great process, and would look forward to having some discussions on that. And that the uniqueness of our relationship and with both the community and adjacent landholders and the federal government makes us a little nervous that we're being looked at the same way as a resort lodge or a guest ranch, just given our carrying capacities and the numbers of people that we can facilitate recreating currently. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, and who else in the middle section would like to speak? I think we have two people. Come on up. Thank you. Just when it looks like.
My name is Peter McCouda, 3918 Orchard Court in Boulder. I'm the owner of Stone Mountain Lodge, which is just outside of Lyons. Hopefully, most of you are familiar with it to some degree. It's been a commercial operation for 120 years. At one point, I believe, at least a portion of it was zoned commercial property. We are currently non-conforming, and of course have to go through special use review for whatever we do. And it has never, we have never done that, for obvious reasons. It's too much of a burden, it's too much risk, and particularly do something minor, just a porch on a cabin, for example. A lot has to do with intent here, what you all are trying to do. Is the intent for properties like Stone Mountain persistent to the future or not? I would like to know the answer to that at the conclusion of this effort. I would like a clear answer to that. And a clear way of describing to me the answer to that would be very simple in the case of Stone Mountain Lodge. It should be in a zone where resort use is by right for our property. There is nothing, basically, nor wrong with that for 120-year commercial operation. That would tell us and to future generations and future owners that this property will persist into the future and is expected to do so. And it is also expected to do some reasonable improvements, upgrade for whatever it needs, flow with the economy, flow with changes of the needs of the community and so forth. That would be a very clear statement of what should be in the future. So what I really want to make sure is that the intent of all of this has a clear outcome, and that's the most important point I can make. The other thing is, the existing properties that have been in operation for a long time should obviously give precedence to right what has been wronged in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on up. And is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to speak?
Good afternoon, everybody. Mindy McCouda, live in Boulder, co-owner of Stone Mountain Lodge. Of course, I want to reiterate what Peter said. We have 120-year history, so we predate a lot of the other, both profit and nonprofit properties. Out of this 100 properties that we're discussing today, we believe that we originally had a commercial zoning, and that was stripped, but we can't, we can't prove it right now. And, you know, an existing commercial operation should not really be in an ag zoning, and we should not have to go through special use review for adding a porch, or a storage shed, or a building. Now, with regards to sustainability, that comes out an awful lot, and I want to remind everyone that there is a section in the 30-year-old comp plan that talks about economic sustainability, as well as all the environmental sustainability. It talks about tourism. It talks about, you know, the value of properties like ours in the county, and there aren't very many of ours. So keep in mind that sustainability should also value economic sustainability as well as environmental sustainability. We have a hard time right now. You know, money, the economy is affecting us greatly. You know, lodging in the entire state and in the nation is not only down, but the state of Colorado is not funding tourism next year. So I wouldn't say we're a dying breed, but just because we are a quote-for-profit business doesn't mean that things are easy for us. We would like to have some kind of year-round facility. We'd like to have indoor space with a fireplace so people can have a hot cocoa and, you know, be warm in our lodge over the winter. We don't have that. Forty, 50 years ago, there was a restaurant on the property. We know that because the old timers tell us so, that they were able, people were able to catch trout in the pond and cook it at the restaurant and eat it there, in addition to staying overnight. And something like that should be allowed to return. As far as the zoning, and for us trying to become a new zone on our own, it's very expensive. It's probably more expensive than special use review. But the county has taken the initiative in the 1990s to create mountain institutional. They're looking at plains institutional, but that won't affect resort lodges like us. I echo, and I don't know if I mean right back there, who said that if we had a commercial zone, we'd like to get it back. We are a commercial operation. We are not a very high-profit commercial operation, but we'd really like to be able to sustain ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And on the far side over here?
I'm Brian Johnson. I live at 10154 Lookout Road in Lafayette, and thank you again, as everybody was saying to Abby and the whole staff for this work. I would echo a lot of what's been said today. You've heard a number of folks talking about, about the ways to use the special use review process and the code to not only say what you can't do, but to incentivize good behavior. And so we really believe strongly, I represent Alexander Dawson School, that if you do allow some level of growth for institutions, you now have a way to say, okay, you can do that, but here is what you must do to incentivize good behaviors, whether that has to do with building down rather than out and up, or whether it has to do with limiting resource depletion, preserving land, and all of those. We certainly, I'd be about the sixth person you've heard today saying that we do think that a nonprofit institution has different restrictions in how it can survive in terms of sustainability. It's, we're, it is a tough time for nonprofits, even relatively large ones. And so we think that for Boulder County to potentially recognize the legal difference, which already exists, between nonprofit and for-profit institutions might be valuable. I would also say that we at the school certainly support the idea of a plains institutional zone that would be related to the historical context of the parcel, which we, as, for instance, also predated the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. Would look at the kinds of things you have to have and where you have to be if you're a certain kind of institution. As you heard from Abby, there are some institutions, and we think we're one, that simply can't exist inside one of, one of the cities. Likewise, the demographics of who you are serving, if you're more regional than, and actually it would cause more traffic if you were in one of the cities than if you are centrally located to the people you're serving. Those kinds of things, access on a major thoroughfare, those kinds of things we think would be valuable. You've heard several people talk about the size of the parcel, and of course, almost every definition of intensity or density that one could run across include not only the activity, but also the size of the parcel or the size of the item being discussed. So we would very much like to see that included. That having said, we want to make sure that whatever is established, there's a way for, just as residents have an opportunity to mitigate against any changes, that institutions have the same right, by buffering and screening, by mitigating with sustainable development practices, by a TDR program, a TDC program. We think that the logic of that is so profound here in Boulder County for residents, it makes all the sense in the world to extend it to institutions. So we also believe that the use of floor area ratios and the footprint should be very much a part of the calculation. I regret that my time will not allow me to go any farther. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name is Robert Wessel. I'm one of the owners of Pine Grove Cabins in Allen's Park, Colorado. And I just want to remark that the process that you are taking now, we really appreciate in Allen's Park, and we've been very well represented by Mrs. Ackerman and others. And the efforts of these, of your planning staff and this young lady have really, have really made a great light in everybody's heart in Allen's Park. The cabins, the Pine Grove cabins that I represent has been in business for over a century, and some, it has changed. In fact, in the early 1900s, it actually had a store and a garage with a gasoline pump. So it has evolved even from that. But over a period since 1920s is when many of the cabins were built and have been improved and the systems improved. And so our business is one that was, lost its business zoning in the early 1980s. And we, we want to contribute to the efforts of our community, and we'd like to represent us as, as a summertime picture of the mountains and of life in the mountains to all the fine folks that come up as, as visitors to our community and to the mountains. And I'd also like to mention that we also support the efforts of the camps in our area. All of them are fantastic camps, and most of them are nonprofit, and we appreciate what these folks are doing and support giving them a classification that will give them a nonprofit advantage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, one more over here.
Tim Borst, 5414 Westridge Drive, Boulder, 80301. I've been listening today to what I've heard, and there's a consistent theme with everyone who seems to have had the comp plan foisted upon them at one point in time during history that changed what it was that they were doing for years and years, what they thought were as a legitimate or a use by right, or something that they, they... as a legitimate or a use by right, or something that they could pursue legally. It seems like it's time and the process is in place to legitimize or re-legitimize those uses that already exist, those significant uses, whether they're business or institutional in our county, so that there's clarity for those folks in terms of how they, whether they have the ability to exist or continue to exist, rather than at the whim of a special use that could be changed at any point in time, you know, with the political change of environment. So I'd encourage this body to continue the efforts towards either an overlay or formal zoning changes that basically allow these uses to be outside of the special use permit process. I mean, that's really the goal here. Let's get them outside of that process and create clarity and consistency, and specific zones would allow that to occur. I've sat through the process with Alexander Dawson School, and I think it's a poster child for what's wrong with the process, and I'm encouraged that it's going to be changed, or hopeful that it will be. One specific element of that process for schools in particular that I'd like to comment on are the enrollment caps, which I think are arbitrary and clunky, and really don't necessarily have a rational relationship to any objective standard for those kinds of institutions. We need to allow, and you've heard it here before, we need to allow for prudent growth to occur, whether it's for a business or an institution in our county. And prudent, I think, means objective. Objective standards that you can measure, as Dawson School proposed, as I think Will Torre supported, that allow you to measure the specific criteria of impacts to growth. If there aren't impacts, if impacts can be mitigated, if the situation can be made better than it is today, then that should be encouraged. If someone can't meet those impacts, then the school, or then the organization that you guys, I'm sorry, the county should consider development excise taxes or other situations like you instituted with housing sizes, you might consider that with regard to institutions or businesses, where if those factors can't be mitigated, then a price is paid in order for that to occur. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, one more?
Hi, I'm Lynda Newsom. I spoke earlier, and I didn't get to finish, so Ben said I could finish. To speak on the topic of the advocate on behalf of the applicant, I think there's a couple of things going on here. One is if you do what you're talking about doing here, and really change the rules and the processes so that it's, you know, you're supporting the continued use and function and viability of these kind of things, then some of that, that sense that it's an adversarial thing would go away. But even if that goes away, it's still, and even if you simplify the process, it's still very hard to navigate. I used to work in planning, I've worked in several local planning offices, I don't do it anymore. I've been working on the 747 stuff for a few years. There's a lot of things that are hard for me to figure out of how things work in this county. It is not unique to this county. It's the kind of thing that happens with any complicated process where you're not an expert. What we have with these kinds of businesses and institutions is a lot of small businesses or nonprofits that don't have the resources to buy the experts to get them through this kind of complexity. So, you know, you can think of it as an advocate, you might also think of it as a sherpa. You wouldn't try to do Everest without a guide, and these folks aren't going to make it through even a simplified process without a guide.
Thank you. Okay, is that everyone? With that, we'll close the public hearing and see if staff has any responses. Abby?
Sure, I don't have any direct responses. I think Lynda's first comment was a really good one, a good advice for you. You're probably wondering what we're looking for out of your discussion, and I think it's really those big ideas, trying to figure out what it is that you want staff to focus on in these regulations, what it is that, how these regulations should be crafted to create those incentives for some of the things that people were speaking of. I think that would be really helpful for us. As I mentioned earlier, Michelle Kriesig is here to help sort of, I don't know, be the traffic director a little bit, to kind of help facilitate your discussion, since you can't all see each other. I posted some questions on the screen. These are actually questions that the Planning Commission has considered before. There's also some additional questions in your staff report, but you don't need to just read these questions. Just think about things, I think, on your own, that, questions that you might have, concerns you might have, values that maybe you want to share with one another, so that you can try and figure out from one another, sort of, what these regulations, how these regulations should take shape. I mean, you've heard a lot of the comments from existing owners today. I don't know, there's a lot of material and just a little bit of time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle, and she can prompt you with questions, or you guys can just dive in. I guess it's up to you.
And I think the appropriate term for Michelle is sherpa.
It's one of the better terms that's been used, I think. All right, so I don't know, does anyone have any kind of opening comments they want to You don't want me to start calling on you, do you?
Well, let me start. There have been quite a few people who have said their properties were rezoned sometime in the past, and they would simply like to get them back, zoned back to what they were originally, which would seem to simplify this process immensely for a lot of people. Staff's attitude on that?
I'll address that as best as I can. In the 1980s, in the mid-1980s, there was a comprehensive downzoning throughout the county. And I don't know what all happened during that downzoning. We have a tremendous amount of history about it in the basement. I won't tell you where I was in the early to mid-1980s. But it is a lot of people's understanding that there were businesses that were active businesses. This happened particularly in Allen's Park, where there was a survey apparently that was done. Someone drove around and tried to determine what parcels had active businesses on them and which didn't, and that the survey, the site survey, was done in the winter. And a lot of businesses in the Allen's Park area in particular are seasonal businesses. So there were some areas that may have been downzoned from business to the forestry zone district. And if you look at the zoning map for the Allen's Park area in particular, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense where the B district is versus where the F district is. There's individual parcels that kind of snakes around, it goes through the little commercial corridor in the townsite, and there are areas that are forestry, sort of intermittent with the business zone. So it certainly makes sense, what you've heard from these folks, that there were some areas that were business. You know, the county's zoning started in the mid-1940s, so there have been changes over time with the zone districts. So it's certainly conceivable that zone districts have changed, that they were business, and now it no longer allows business. We haven't done that analysis on every parcel in the county, but it's out there. Looks like Commissioner Torre wants to talk.
I guess just in terms of a few general thoughts. You know, first, I'd like to thank everybody who's here speaking to us today and who's participated in this process. I think it's a really important set of issues that we're trying to take on here, and it is a sort of a complicated mix of a lot of different kinds of uses and different kinds of issues. I think that what's been done over the last 25 to 30 years with the Comprehensive Plan and the downzoning and a whole set of policies over the years, while it's done an enormous amount to preserve the rural character of Boulder County and keeping us from being overrun with the sprawl that we see over much of the Front Range of Colorado, I do think that there have been some unintended consequences. And I think that that's particularly the case when it comes to non-uses that are neither residential or agricultural. And in the attempt to sort of keep those sprawling uses away, we adopted rules that I think have made it very difficult to operate in a number of things that don't fit in those categories. So I think it's very appropriate that we're taking a look at how those rules are structured. I do think that one of the really important questions for us to get clarity on is which sorts of uses we really want to encourage in the unincorporated areas, and, you know, I do believe that there are a number of uses that clearly do belong in unincorporated areas, not in the municipalities, that if you're looking at things like nonprofit camps and Boy Scout and Girl Scout camps, that those are pretty clearly uses that are going to be largely in the rural areas, and uses that really add a lot to the community, and we ought to be encouraging them. Similarly, our one and only ski area is probably going to be outside of the municipalities, and it is another one of the ones where I think we need to figure out, you know, how do we have the appropriate regulations to allow it to continue to thrive over the years? I think that there are a variety of types of resort lodges also fit into that category. Schools and churches are another big part of it, and I think that they're in a slightly different posture in that schools and churches by and large can exist within municipalities. And one of the things that I think we need to be careful of as we look into the future is going to be the tendency for institutions that probably belong in the cities to move out to the county because land is cheaper. And so, I do think that we need to look at those with a somewhat different eye. It doesn't necessarily speak to those existing uses in the, that are in the unincorporated county. I don't think that we should be trying to remove those existing schools and churches, and I think we need to have some opportunities for them to have some reasonable and incremental expansion. But I do think that it's different in nature than those other uses, which I think truly need to be rural in character. Just a couple other comments. I do think that it's important to take a look at what exists on the ground, and I think when you do that, what we see is that for those schools and churches, the vast majority of them are relatively small, and then we have a few outliers, and I think that we need to figure out, you know, what's the appropriate way of addressing the rules for sort of the smaller versus the very large uses. I think that the idea of things like performance standards would be very hard to use on the, for lots of small uses, but I think having performance standards associated with expansion of those larger uses makes a lot of sense. It addresses their impacts, and I think it's doable. So, and I do think that we should figure out a way for existing small businesses throughout the county, the little restaurants and lodges that have been around for a very long time that are non-conforming, to figure out a way to bring them into conformance and allow them to, you know, change with time, to, you know, a way that doesn't dramatically expand them, but allows them to remain economically viable.
Anybody want to comment on Commissioner Torre's comments?
Let me add to what Will has said. When we developed the Comprehensive Plan, we designated geographical areas of the county where we wanted certain things to happen. And that was, in the main, it had to do with agricultural uses, environmental protection, et cetera. And it seems to me that we're now in a position where perhaps we should be modifying the Comprehensive Plan and identifying, in doing so, identifying geographical areas where we would like some uses that we didn't delineate in the original plan to exist. For instance, would it be a regional educational center, a geographical area where we want to encourage private schools, or something of that sort? And perhaps, you know, cemeteries or golf courses? And that we should look at the whole county again, in terms of geographical areas, for uses that we want them to be there, and we do it proactively, rather than reacting to a docket that comes before us.
Mr. Gerstle?
Yeah, I was just wondering, several of the speakers have suggested that there be a distinction between nonprofit and for-profit institutions in determining appropriate uses and permitting requirements. And I was wondering if, what comments you have about making that sort of a distinction for facilities which have essentially a similar use, but are structured differently in their organization?
Yeah, thanks. That comment has come up. I'm not sure that I have an opinion on it right now. It's really come up with camps in particular, because we don't have a good use classification for what camps actually are and how they function. They do fall under these different types of uses that are sort of membership clubs, sort of camp-like. We also have a use called campground, but if you read the definition of campground, it definitely doesn't fit a camp, even though they have very similar words. And so, one of the ideas that came up in our meetings is that because a lot of these camps are nonprofits, and because they are regulated through their tax status with, you know, certain things, that perhaps that would be a good way to just define, help define what they are, and that it might also help set them apart from for-profit entities, because the programs that they have are really focused on the mission of the camp and the mission of their nonprofit status. And the thought being that, you know, in the Land Use Code, we're very careful about multiple principal uses and the different types of uses that are associated with any given use. So if you just focus on the nonprofit status, it would avoid perhaps some of the for-profit activities that might get out of hand, that we might not want to see, that we may have had trouble with in other areas. And I'm thinking, for instance, a nonprofit camp is not going to turn into a wedding venue, for instance, because they can only collect so much money from something that's not related directly to their mission. So it might just be a good way to make a distinction between mission, to kind of focus on the nonprofit status, to focus on how their goals are very similar probably to what our goals are in the Comprehensive Plan as far as, you know, treating the environment nicely, and outreach, and things like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's interesting. Do you see that regulations could be formed, or the wording could be developed in these regulations in the plan, that would appropriately distinguish between nonprofit and for-profit type activities?
I think we could. I haven't done a ton of research into it. This is something, an idea that's come up just from our public meetings. I think it was on February 4th when this idea first came up. You know, we'll certainly need to talk with the attorneys about it, to make sure that there's not some way that we would be, I don't know, stepping on some, something that we shouldn't be, but...
I guess I don't really understand the distinction between nonprofit and profit if it's a land use issue. If it's an intensity of land use, what difference does it make whether it's a profit or a nonprofit?
I think the main issue with intensity, then, is that a lot of what people are talking about, as far as simplifying the code, is to make clear what's allowed, but also allow for evolving uses, and for businesses, for uses to evolve without coming to the county every time for permission for that. And I think with nonprofits, by focusing on the nonprofit mission, if that mission, you know, looks at the stewardship of the land and is doing something that is connected to the land use, I think it is a way that we can look at that and make sure that it's connected to the land use and not just, you know, I don't know...
Well, I think it is, it is an issue of the land use, and there are nonprofits that have come forward with massive intensive uses of the land. So just to say nonprofits are somehow rather exempt, or better citizens is not a true statement.
And I think the focus here was really on camps, not just creating some nonprofit classification that any nonprofit can do whatever they want, as long as it's within their mission. It was really focusing it on the camps in particular, to distinguish it between campgrounds and resort lodges and dude ranches.
Yeah, I would certainly endorse a separate criteria for camps.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I don't see the distinction between nonprofit and profit, and it seems like we definitely need something for camps, and that somehow defining the intensity of the use would be, I think, a better approach than... I also wanted to ask if we instituted something called Plains Institutional, then what groups, you know, for instance, the stuff that Will mentioned, camps, ski areas, resort lodges, small restaurants, what might fall into Plains Institutional zoning?
Well, I don't know what might fall into it. I can tell you what happened with the Mountain Institutional. Certain uses were taken out of the Forestry Zone District, places where people gather, churches, schools, daycares. I believe cemeteries were taken out of the Forestry Zone District, daycares were taken out of the Forestry Zone District. This is all included in your staff report. So it would be a similar sort of thing, where if... So it would be a similar sort of thing where if we were to create a new zone district called Plains Institutional, perhaps certain uses would be taken out of agricultural zone districts, the residential zone districts, R-R-E-R and S-R, and only allowed in Plains Institutional. Or another alternative to that would be allowing uses of a lesser intensity. We do have a lot of uses, churches and daycares in particular, that are pretty small, maybe 5,000 square feet or so. Perhaps at a certain intensity, they can happen in any zone district, but once they get above a threshold, say, I don't know, 50,000 square feet or parking lots greater than 200 cars that could park there, something like that, once they get above a certain intensity, they would be required to be located in the Plains Institutional Zone District.
I'm going to explore the profit, nonprofit a little more. When we think of the nonprofit, we think it might be a religious organization or it might be, it's some sort of... One that comes to mind is the YMCA of the Rockies. Now, I know it's not in our county, but the example is this is a nonprofit organization and in some cases in our code, we talk about those which it's only for the members of that organization. But then you get to the point where organizations like that slop over into the public arena and they begin to rent rooms like a motel or... And I'm not talking about just having large events, maybe a wedding or something, but they actually do it almost on an individual basis. And they have kind of crossed the boundary between what they're offering for their organization and their members into offering public services. And I don't know if we have those in this county, but it means that we blurred the line of where we're saying these types of things along.
We certainly have those types of uses and I think that is a very valid concern because there are different land use characteristics that happen with, you know, in the lodging example that you give, you know, a church camp or a Boy Scout camp or something like that, you'll often find that the people arrive there together, whether it's a family that's going to be there for a certain period of time or the kids all show up in the church van or the troop all shows up together. There are different impacts just related to traffic, for instance, as opposed to an overnight lodging situation where people come and go at different rates, they stay for different durations, it's not the same sort of pattern. So you're right, there is a concern with that.
Yes, Abby, I want to explore a little bit. To me, it seems like there's two very clearly delineated efforts we're trying to do here or at least could potentially do here. And one is, and quite a bit of the testimony involved, current situations which people would like a remedy for. And I guess in going down that path, I'm interested, somebody speaking mentioned that there was 100 properties that were potentially the focus of this effort. And I don't know if that's a quantifiable number that the county came up with or that's just something that was thrown out, but it seems to me in creating a registry, for instance, there would be a set and finite number of potential nonconforming properties that would be listed. And I want to understand the scope of what that means first. And I think the second path is really, what can we do prospectively to make it easier for many people that have not imagined what kind of uses they want to have on properties to make it crystal clear how they can proceed with those types of plans and projects. But the first one is the easier one to grasp because it's known to some extent what is involved with that process. So help me understand what we're talking about and the scope of that. And I guess with Weld County's registry, what does that actually entail? It seems to me there could be some issues that I would have with that particular process too.
Yeah, the scope of this project, it's evolving. It's actually still evolving. The official name of the docket is Evaluation of the Special Use Process and Uses. And we've identified a few select uses, churches, schools, resort lodges, camps in particular. But there are other uses that are coming up in this and there are, you know, the process itself has been identified as an issue. In talking to people, it's easiest to find people willing to talk if they already have an existing use. So we have done a lot of talking with existing users, many of them are nonconforming uses. As far as numbers of nonconforming uses, we have a pretty good idea of how many they are, but we don't totally know. Because the way you can become nonconforming is sort of tricky, it's sort of tricky. A church is actually a use by right in all zone districts except for forestry until you get to 100 or more worshippers in any given time, like on any given Sunday or Saturday, whenever the worship service is. We don't know how many people are attending a church service, so we don't know which of these churches that haven't been through the process have become nonconforming, for instance. I do have a map in the back of the room that a number of people have seen and the map itself is being edited and updated to make sure that it's current. There are about 100 or so parcels identified on that map and those are churches, schools, camps, resort lodges, and uses of community significance, which is, those are all capital letters, that's an actual use in the land use code. There's about 100 of those. I would say maybe 20% are nonconforming and the other 80% have been through the process and are legal. But there are some challenges with all of those that are existing and I think you're hearing a lot of that, you know, they do evolve and I think there are improvements that could be made in the code to help those folks. Does that address?
No, that helps because the 100 properties reference was, you know, quantifiable and I didn't know what we were talking about with that. And again, I think that there's, you know, all the testimony we're going to hear, I think, is going to be about existing issues because that's what drives people's motivation to speak on a docket. And there's not as much as the what will we do in the future when some use comes up and when we start to consider whether we want to favor existing uses and disfavor new uses. We don't really know what the new uses are, so it's kind of really a tricky situation to make a hard decision to say, we don't want any new uses, we don't know what those new uses might be. It's self-limiting, I think, to go down that path to some degree.
And I have received some criticism from a couple of people who have pointed that out, who have said, well, you know, what if there was a new camp that wanted to establish? What if there was a new, you know, something or another? We haven't identified those people and they aren't talking to us right now, which is true, but, you know, it's difficult to try and identify them. And I'm working, there was one situation in particular and I'm actually talking with that person and we'll get there. But yeah, it is difficult, but I think the, you know, even though the potential new users might not be in this discussion right now and you might not be hearing from them right now, I think that having this differentiation between new uses and existing uses makes sense anyway. It makes sense in the comprehensive plan, it makes sense with the sustainability goals that are described in the comprehensive plan, it makes sense with the county's sustainability goals about, you know, recognizing embodied energy and allowing that to, you know, stay there, like not just demolishing buildings but decommissioning, deconstructing buildings so that we retain the value that's within that. You know, I think there's a lot of values that really speak to that, you know, favoring, if that's what you want to call it. As far as the nonconforming use registry, my understanding is that Weld County uses this for dairy farms in particular, dairy operations. There's been a lot of growth in Weld County over the years, a lot of residential growth around areas that were particularly, that were historically farming areas. And it was seen as a way, you know, the people would complain about the smell or the sounds or whatnot and it was a way for farmers to establish what their use was and for it to be on record and for people to be able to find out and know that this was an established use and it was nonconforming and they were able to keep going at the existing level. And for that particular situation, I think it's been something that's worked well. Something else that we've talked about at the staff level is that if we perhaps have a nonconforming use registry, perhaps there's a way that we can allow fairly simple, modest improvements that maybe aren't directly health and safety related. So say you have a lodge and, I don't know, you want to make improvements, renovations to the existing rooms that aren't health, safety related but would just help your business, would help update the room. Right now, you can't actually do that, you can't pull permits for that because it's not health, safety. But maybe if you registered, maybe we could, you know, set the regulations up that would allow you to make those improvements without going through special use.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pearlman?
Well, this is, needless to say, one of the more interesting discussions that we have and I think it's because special uses are both at times difficult to incorporate into a landscape but also very important to incorporate into a landscape. And I think that's why these are, when we sit up here, just the three of us, and when you sit up, the nine of you, these tend to be the ones that draw the most public interest. You know, and that's just the nature of the kinds of uses that we're talking about. And so I think this is an important discussion to have. I do think there really is a difference in how you look at existing uses and potential future uses and that's just because it's much easier to understand what you have and to imagine it. I think what we all worry about is what any kind of change or modification to the code means in terms of cumulative effect across the board. One of the common phrases used around here is loving things to death and we have a tremendously beautiful county and I think we also know that our local economy really depends on having these beautiful vistas and areas and preserved lands and a lot of people, you know, have an easier time making a living here than they would elsewhere because of that. We can't destroy all that. On the other hand, we know that we need to have a functioning economy for people to be able to make ends meet and live here and have reasonable lives. And so this is just one element of trying to find that kind of balance. I think there's some clear things that we can do in the special use part of the code to make things a little bit easier. One is, I don't think we always have the right level of code for the kind of approval that's being requested and that at times, you know, we spend more time and energy looking at a fairly minor modification or expansion. I think we can try to calibrate that better. I do think there are going to be times when we want to look at a particular use more carefully and we need to have that in place as well. I think we've heard a lot about camps and I think having zoning categories that fit the uses that exist in the county makes a fair amount of sense. I don't suspect that's going to be too controversial. Nonconforming uses are really the trickiest ones and that is because at some point along the line, somebody decided that that kind of use wasn't the kind of use that was expected in a particular area and they're, you know, under our code sort of characterized as being not in the right place. And I think we all know, we know some of the nonconforming uses we're talking about but not all of them. My guess is that there are some nonconforming uses that we're very comfortable with, others that we really do have the expectation that as nonconforming uses are treated in the law, that they eventually fade away just because they don't make sense. I don't know which ones are which and maybe that's something we need to figure out somewhere along the way. There's also the question about whether it's a nonconforming use makes sense to continue legally and with, you know, all the protections of the law into the future or whether the zoning should be changed. When we, when you have a business zone designation for a parcel of land, it means that not only that particular use that's currently being used is expected to be there, but anything else that fits into that zoning category. And I can imagine there's a number of places where we could look around the county and say, well, yeah, that quaint little restaurant, the mill site or something like that, that makes sense, that's historical, we like that, that's a use of community significance. But if that were to go out of business and someone were to put in a different kind of use that would fit in that category, maybe that doesn't have the same feel. And so I think we, at some point, we're going to have to figure out if we bring, if we change the legal classification of any particular use, what we're doing. Are we making it legal and allowing it to expand in the way, in the new rules? Or are we saying that zoning is changing in that for the foreseeable future, anything that fits in that zoning category, whether it's like what it's replacing or not, is legal? And I think that's a big, a much bigger question. I, you know, I like the idea that there is a wealth of different kinds of things to do in Boulder County and having grown up here and having spent a week during fifth grade at Highlands Ranch Camp or whatever it was called at the time was important to me and I still remember it. And I think we want people to be able to have those kinds of experiences and all of the other things that happen in rural Boulder County. I think what makes me nervous and what makes a lot of people nervous is what happens if we allow too much of that? And that's why I favor things like a Plains Institutional use designation, whether it's an overlay or whether it's its own zoning designation, I think that makes sense. You figure out in what locations you're expecting that higher intensity use and you allow them there. You don't say, we're going to have a zoning free-for-all and it's okay if we have a large school, a large church, a large camp, a large, anything else on any particular corner on any rural road in the county. And I think, you know, this, we were charged with sort of looking towards the end and having a big vision and I think that's appropriate. I want, I want there to be a breadth of activity in the rural parts of the county, up in the mountains and on the plains, and I also want it to retain its character so that we don't love these important lands to death. And I think it's finding that kind of balance that, you know, we're asking your help with and asking staffs help with. And some of the things on this list help with that. Having recognition that existing uses, most of them should be able to grow incrementally over time, modify a little bit, meet current needs, makes sense to me. Having some set of limitations on where institutional uses go so that they don't happen on every corner everywhere in the county makes sense to me. New uses, I do think there should be an expectation about how big they should grow because one of those wild cards that we have throughout the county is not knowing if the small school is going to end up being very large. And I think people who live around schools and people have sort of expectations for what it's going to look and feel like around them should have some certainty. And so I think if there's a watchword, that's it. It's certainty, it's certainty for people who are going through a process to know what's expected of them, certainty for land use and knowing how they're going to apply this code towards anything that comes up and to the people who, you know, who live in the area or drive by the area to know that, you know, they have a pretty decent sense for what's likely to happen in that area. We have, this is a good problem to get to struggle with because I think we get to think about what we want to see happen and to figure out good ways of letting that happen and also to play a little defense against those few things that we don't think make as much sense in certain places in the county. So there's a lot of detail in this and I'd certainly love to, you know, be able to tackle these questions one by one and hear the thoughts of everybody here and more out there, but those are at least my thoughts.
Mr. Hartman?
So I just wanted to add, certainly my thought at listening to everyone who spoke today was streamlining the code, it has got to be a must. It sounds difficult at best and a very scary process overall. I like very much the idea of a camps designation. I think I agree with what I've heard also, the profit, nonprofit to me gets very sticky, especially when summer camps, for example, can be renting out to other groups to earn some extra bucks and how do we deal with that and the impact and traffic impact, is it greater, is it less? So the camps designation, I like that idea, but not differentiating between profit, nonprofit, not just for camps, for any entity in the county, I think it's really difficult when you're talking about specific land use code. And I really actually have a question for staff. I understand how very well this overlay district umbrella could work, streamlining this process. I'm wondering, I understand the benefits and I'm just wondering if there are specific drawbacks to doing something like that that's not outlined in the staff report.
So specific drawbacks with doing a Plains Institutional Zone District or Overlay District? I think that the biggest drawback I'm thinking of right now is that if it's something that staff initiates, these rezonings of existing uses, it's a tremendous amount of staff time. The docket that took place in the mid-'90s for the Mountain Institutional Zone Districts, I mean, it looked at all of the uses that were potentially affected by it. The county initiated the rezonings. There was a lot of work that went into making sure that the rezoning made sense given the site characteristics, that, you know, the site characteristics were clearly defined. But, you know, that said, I don't think just staff work is necessarily a drawback. I, yeah, anyway, I'm not trying to get out of doing work is what I'm telling you. I, yeah, anyway, I'm not trying to get out of doing work, is what I'm telling you. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if anybody, if any of my supervisors want to speak to drawbacks of that. I, I think it's generally a good idea. I think it's something that's supported by staff. There's a lot more to flesh out with the idea, but.
Yeah, I, I thought it was encouraging that a number of people mentioned they would support a TDR program of some sort, and it sounds like an interesting idea to me. I wonder if others have comments on that.
Commissioner Menard?
I'm going to throw out a thought here for discussion, and the question that I'm raising, is it possible for the site plan review process to substitute for special use or limited special use? One or the other, but not both? And the example that I've, I've come up with, if an applicant wants to expand or change a use by adding or expanding, and this is an existing use, a structure to offer this expansion or for some service, couldn't the site plan review process serve to monitor the county's needs and impacts without going through the special use process itself?
That's another idea that staff has certainly talked about. So if a user, if a property owner was proposing a modest improvement, that perhaps it would make more sense to use the site plan review criteria as opposed to the special use review criteria. We've talked about it, we haven't decided at what level it would be appropriate. Certainly, the site plan review criteria is focused on and meant for new buildings, fitting in with the character of the neighborhood, visual impacts, things like that. That said, there are criteria within site plan review, within SPR, that really are only meant for single-family homes. So there's some modifications that would need to be made there, but that's certainly something that we've talked about.
And like, one other thing on the nonconforming uses. Just want to say that just because it's historic and it's been there forever, doesn't mean that there isn't a need to do updating for public health and safety. And I guess the question, does that mean that they have to go through the whole, the whole site, or special use process? Or could this just be handled in certain cases where the health and safety might be? The nonconforming issues are those issues, safety, health, things like that, that can be corrected just by building permits or by inspections. And then after the building permits are issued and they're resolved, then it would, could be transferred to a legal use. And that set of those kinds of things.
Certainly, right now, nonconforming uses, they are only allowed to make improvements that are health and safety related. So if they need to re-roof because the roof is leaking, that, that would be a health and safety related improvement, they can get a building permit for that. But the way the regulations are now, they would remain a nonconforming use. They wouldn't automatically become a special use. So that's something that we could certainly talk about. I don't know that, that that's something that we would necessarily say, that just because they've made a certain health and safety improvement, they should automatically be able to become conforming, but perhaps there's some in-between.
So I just want to do a time, a little time check here. The commissioners have an appointment at 3:45, and I believe the planning commission's regular meeting time starts at 3:45. So we've only got a little bit of time left. So I, I just want to make sure, part of my facilitating this is to make sure that staff is getting the information they need. So there was a question that was kind of left on the table, I think Commissioner Schenks asked about the TDR program, and I think staff would be interested to know if there is other support from the commissioners, all the commissioners to proceed with looking at that, so.
I actually wanted to speak to that a little bit. I guess at first blush, I'm concerned about a non-residential TDR program, because you're dealing with a much more diverse group of impacts when you're talking about businesses than you are with residences. And so while you can both classify in a limited way the impacts for non-residents, and then quantify it and spread it around the county through a TDR program, my concern is that a TDR program for businesses and non-residential uses will lead to sort of maybe some monsters we don't want to see where issues such as geography, traffic, type of business, or non-residential uses at issue. I wouldn't want to see those important discreet issues obviated by just the ability to buy a TDR.
Commissioner Tor?
I do believe that we should take a look at TDR approach for at least certain types of institutional uses. I think that it would be important to craft it carefully, and if you think about the residential program, it does not give an unlimited ability to expand. I mean, there's, you still have the site plan review process in that case, and there has to be a determination that the impacts on that particular property are not so significant that you can approve it, but there's still a requirement above certain sizes to purchase those TDRs and to transfer that density. I think it makes sense to take a look at that for, in particular, things like large schools and large churches, where, where I think we probably can understand the impacts fairly well. So I would support, you know, further exploration of non-residential TDR program.
Commissioner Manco?
I would as well. I, I think there are some opportunities for us to explore somewhat innovative concept there, in that we can craft it so that it doesn't turn to quite the monster that we might think it would be at this moment in time. I just wanted to add to that, around this, not around the specific TDR topic, but I know, from what I've heard, the public testimony and comments, I think one of our key issues here is to look at the existing uses and figure out a common sense way to approach the maintenance and incremental improvements of existing structures and locations. And the tough thing, I think, has come up a number of times, what is a reasonable way to do that, and what is the appropriate set of measures that go, that we should put in place there? So just wanted to, to, I'd be really interested in whatever simplicity or support we can look at around that topic. It's been raised before, but just wanted to add emphasis to it.
Neil?
Yeah, just one last comment. Obviously, there's lots of interest here in moving things along and streamlining the process. And I don't think those of us sitting up here can tell staff what the optimum way to go about doing that is. But in all situations, there are always things that can be done now, quickly, low-hanging fruit, that will solve the problem. If we get down the rat hole of TDRs, it'll be two years before anything comes out. So I would suggest you phase what you're trying to do, and pick up the things that will help people immediately, and pick up things like TDRs at a second or third phase in this process. But figure out the things that can't be streamlined and get them back in front of us now.
Commissioner Proman?
One of the, one of the good things about a TDR program in this context is that we already have successful TDR programs to build off of. And, you know, if we were starting from scratch, I would agree with you. But I think, you know, choosing a limited set of circumstance to do it, and either grafting it onto an existing program, or otherwise, I think, would allow us to do it quickly and to do it in a way that we weren't allowing something to happen that, that we don't want to see. I think there's been real value in the TDR programs generally in clustering development, and when there is a more intense use of a particular property, having a less intense use somewhere nearby, I mean, sort of that whole notion of balance. And I think if we are going to see very intense uses of property, I think it's entirely appropriate to sort of have eased the burden in, in the area around that and have less intense uses in that overall effort to find balance. So I, I guess I'm optimistic and would defer to staff in terms of how, how much energy and time it would take and whether it would slow down our progress in, in doing the things that, that we know need to get done.
Commissioner Tor?
A question on another issue. I'm very interested in this, this notion of identifying which nonconforming uses really should be brought out of nonconformity, and which ones there really is a reason why, oh, we don't believe that that sort of use is appropriate anymore, and it really should remain nonconforming. Does staff have a, a sense of how we would go, go about such a process?
There are certainly goals and policies within the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan, that focuses on some of the, it hints at some of these uses. It talks about supporting tourism in the county, and it talks about just supporting opportunities for recreation, some of these different things that I think does hint at lodges in particular, ski areas, even camps to some extent. So I think there are ways that we can look to the comprehensive plan for guidance on which uses we would perhaps favor, support, and which uses should perhaps remain nonconforming. I think there are other goals within the comprehensive plan, such as our environmental goals, that would help provide guidance as to which nonconforming uses we would want to see remain nonconforming and eventually go away. We would need to look at that a little bit deeper, and, you know, I guess when the details really get down to it, we'd have to start looking at individual uses and individual plan goals and policies. But I do think there is guidance already.
Commissioner Menard?
Abby, just because I'm a fan of tables and matrices, I'll bring this up, but I found myself going through this docket and saying, new use, existing use, et cetera. And then I found myself asking questions like, the use is new, but the structure that's being proposed is not, it's just a new use in the structure, or it's a new use in a specific location, or a new use that's never been before allowed in the county. And all these combinations seem to be popping up here, but they're not collected in a, in a place that you could clarify how it works as a whole group. So if you could do something like that, and all the different combinations to show what we're talking about for clarity, it would be helpful.
Commissioner Gerstl?
Thanks. I'd like to ask a couple of questions and also respond to, to Mr. Schenks on the, on the TDR question. One is, we've heard among the public input here, a number of allusions to horror stories about the SU process. And it's also, we also know that typically the people who are unhappy with the process are the ones who show up and comment on it. But is it possible to give us any idea of, of typical time requirements and other input requirements for all applicants for, through the SU process? So that we get a feel whether this is, you know, an atypical 1% picture, or this is the way most, most of the people experience it?
That's certainly information that we have and that I could bring back to at a later date. I don't have that information now, but we can let you know when the application was submitted, when it was approved, how many hearings it went through, what the fees paid were. We could gather that data for you.
I, I think that would be useful to, to know.
Okay.
And then, secondly, on the, on the TDR question, I'm quite open-minded about the possibilities of using that process, but I share Ben's concerns about attempting to use the TDR process to mitigate impacts which aren't adequately mitigated by TDRs. And so I think that's something we need to be conscious of in moving ahead on that.
Does anybody have any other comments on TDRs in particular? I think the other, the other thing I noted that's kind of this outstanding issue that I'd be interested to know, if there are any more comments, is how we treat existing uses. To me, it sounds like listening to your conversation, that there is an interest by both the planning commissioner and the commissioners to have some more information about what kind of uses there are and ways to deal with those existing uses. I just want to make sure that, that anybody else who had a comment on that had an opportunity to put in their two cents?
Well, I would just say that, you know, it's, it's always a question. You want to allow for the evolution of uses and for, you know, with changing times and changing economics, and to allow people to continue to have a viable business model, if that's what they're doing, or to modify a camp to meet the needs of the next generation of kids. Who knows what the world's going to look like into the future? On the other hand, you know, constant change, always in the same direction, may not be what we're most interested in. And that's why I think that at some point, you do have to say, there is a limit to, to what can be done with this property. But I think to try to figure out how, what kinds of incremental changes can be allowed, or to what level, at least with existing ones that we have, at least then so people, organizations can plan into that future and know what, you know, what the, what they're going to be able to do is an important part of that.
So that begs one question that is up there that we haven't really talked about, is whether there's a maximum development level in unincorporated Boulder County. And we haven't had much discussion of that. I think there was a little bit in the, from the public testimony, but I'd be interested to see if anybody has any thoughts on whether there should be a maximum intensity.
Commissioner Tor?
I guess a couple of thoughts. You know, first, on your previous question, I do think that it makes sense to look at a distinction between existing uses and new uses. Not to say that new uses wouldn't be allowed, but I do think that the scale of use that would be allowed may be different. And really, as I look at it, again, looking at the uses that are out there, most of them are relatively small. We have a handful of outliers. I think that we basically want those outliers to be able to continue and to have some incremental expansion so that they are able to remain viable, but we would not want to see more, the creation of, you know, additional uses in the unincorporated county that were at the scale of our handful of really large uses. And so to me, that's the kind of distinction that I, that I would make. And I think that that ends up getting, you know, feeding into this question, that we may want to look at that distribution of existing uses and really say that, you know, you, you look at where most of the, the maximum size that, you know, you tend to have for, for those uses, and you maybe set that as a threshold where we're not really looking for any additional uses to go beyond those, beyond those sizes. If they're going to, then you have a lot of requirements in terms of mitigation and TDRs, but you still have some mechanism to, to address the incremental expansion of those handful of much larger structures, or much larger uses.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Given the fact we have just a few minutes left, does anyone else have any burning issues they want to bring up? Anything else you need?
So my goals at this point for this project are to take your thoughts and start to develop draft code language, which is going to be tricky, because there are a lot of moving parts in this. But I think, Commissioner Anderson, you make a really good point, that perhaps there are some low-hanging fruit in this, perhaps some things can be fast-tracked, and other things are going to take more public outreach, more consideration, and we'll look into that as well. I want to, I know it feels slow sometimes to the public, but I also want to respect their time and give them ample time to respond to staff's proposals. So I'm guessing that I'm not going to be able to get information back to the planning commission by March, because my deadline is a week before the March planning commission, and I want to give the public two weeks before, which means I've got one week to take all this stuff and write regulations. So I'd like to take some time, probably come back to you in April. And I really would like to give the public about two weeks or so, three weeks or so, to look at these draft regulations. There's probably going to be some holes in them, because there's a lot of issues that are still up in the air. You know, what I'm hearing is that you do like existing uses, you do support making a distinguishment between existing uses and new uses, you do support allowing incremental increases to existing uses, perhaps through a simpler process than a full special use. You support camps as their own use classification. You support making it more clear. What else? I think that's about, I think that's about it. You know, we're probably going to have additional public meetings. From what I heard, the last two public meetings we had, just to go over this document that you read today, was helpful for people, even though it's still very conceptual, so we're probably going to have more public meetings as well. Yeah, it is a little tedious, but I think it's- Yeah, it is a little tedious, but I think it's helpful, I don't think there's any benefit to rushing this at this point, so.
I think you heard encouragement to create a camp category.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Abby. This, I know staff put a lot of time and energy here, we really appreciate it, and thank you to everyone who came today and who spoke. Thank you for your input.
And for those here for the planning commission docket, we'll begin in about five, six, seven minutes. We're going to take a quick break here before we start that, though. Thank you.